Before we start, Trish, is this all?
So the consultants are going to be virtual?
Oh, they are.
And it's all arranged?
They're already signed in and waiting.
Yep, they're in the waiting room, I would guess.
Okay.
Would you like me to give you an introduction?
We haven't started yet.
Okay.
I was just asking you.
Well, I know, but when that happens?
Yes, please. Okay, we're ready, everyone? Good afternoon, I'd like to call the work session of the Annapolis City Council to order for Thursday, today, May 16th, 2024. Call to order at 3:07. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Assistant Attorney, would you please present the first item on the agenda?
First item on the agenda is ID 8924, the class and comp study.
Okay, I see we have with us Ms. Hopkins. Would you present or introduce the special guest that we have and what this is all about?
I'd be happy to. At the council's request, we're getting ready to give you an overview of the classification and compensations study that's been going on. This is a project overview, you know, we're not quite at the completion stage, but we wanted to make sure you got the in-depth information that you were after. We have with us today, we have Gregory Davis, who's a principal with PRM Consulting, the minority business enterprise that we contracted with for this particular study. Sherium is also with him, and so is Gray Thurn. They have been working very intimately on this project with Gregory Davis as well. And a little bit later on, just because there's a bit of a scheduling conflict for Peter Kennedy, Peter Kennedy will join this team more focused on the compensation discussion. Good afternoon, Greg.
Well, good afternoon, and sorry we couldn't be there with you in person. And greetings to the city council members. And before we get started, I just wanted to make sure, how should we address the council members?
Do you mind introducing yourselves for the consultant?
We'd be glad to. I'll begin, I'm Alderwoman Sheila Finlayson, representing Ward Four, and acting mayor until the mayor arrives. And I do apologize for not having the opportunity to meet you prior to this time. I had hoped that I would have an opportunity, so welcome. Alderwoman, Ward One?
Yes, thank you. Alderwoman Finlayson is also on the Finance Committee, which I chair, and I'm also representing Ward One.
Alderman Ross Arnett, Wards Two through Eight.
So we have three Aldermen present today at this point.
So you don't know if you have out there, is that maybe listening in?
Right, let's hope that they all are.
Okay, alright.
Terrific, well, thank you so much for that introduction. As Tricia mentioned, my name is Gregory Davis. I'm a principal with PRM Consulting. We're a human resource consulting firm located in Washington DC. We have offices in Maryland, Virginia, New York, and Indianapolis. And we have a specialty practice around class and compensation. And I've got several team members, now I'll introduce them just in a moment. And for the city council, we wanted to make sure we're following your appropriate agenda. And so, we were going to lay out a briefing that really focused on the scope of the work and the objectives. We wanted to talk a little bit about the methodology that we deployed, and some early findings for the council. And then talk about action steps, if that works for you, Chair of the council.
Absolutely. Please go forward.
Well terrific, and again, I wish you were there in person, down on the beautiful water. But of course, I'm sure there'll be plenty of opportunities to do that. I'm a principal with PRM Consulting, I've been doing this work for about 20 years. And for this particular study, we do on average anywhere from 10 to 15 studies per month. Some of our clients include Anaronda County, this is how we came to you, Fairfax County, Montgomery County, and also a number of federal agencies. For example, one of the reasons that one of our members is a little bit delayed is we're also presenting testimony for the Office of the Control of the Currency, because we're doing a class and compensation study for them. My compensation analyst who wanted to be here is in surgery this week, so he couldn't be here. But again, we've got a team here to brief the council on the study. And just want to share with you, from the onset of this, the Office of Human Resource has been a collaborative partner. We have met with them every week since the beginning of the study. So that's 52 weeks' worth of meetings that we've had with Tricia, whom she has been so kind and generous to lend her office space. So again, I want to talk just a little bit about the scope of the study. When we began this study, we were posed with a couple of questions. And the history of this is because one of the positions, as we understand it, in the Office of Emergency Management, was having issues around equity and pay. Well, that's our passion, that's what we do, and we do well. We have a specialty practice that focuses just on classification and compensation. And we prepared a deck for you, we're going to walk through for you. And please, stop me at any time for any questions. We're here to answer any questions you might have. So that's kind of the approach that we'd like to take. And some of the pain points that we heard early on in the study were around longevity. And again, I'm going to share with you some definitions, so we can get to that. We also heard issues around what the county's compensation philosophy is. That is, how do you want to pay people? Do you want to pay them at the top of the market? Do you want to be competitive at the market or below the market? And we'll get into those comments as well. I want you to know that we had over 17 staff members working on this project. Because this, in my opinion, was, we wanted to apply the gold standard for the city. And I think you'll see that we've done just that. So that's a little bit about our background. I've got Gray Thurn Weston on the call with me. Gray Thurn is a classification subject matter expert. She has over 30 years of experience in classification, classifying jobs, and I'll share with you more about that. Sherium Stansel Foster is also on the line, she's a human resource specialist. And I can tell you, she has been working feverishly, returning every phone call, returning every email that anyone has asked us about. So that's the commitment that we've had to this study. So with that, I'd like to just jump into some terms that you're going to hear about. And again, if you've got any questions, please stop us, because this is what we do all the time. On average, we're doing somewhere between 10 to 15 studies like this every month. So on average, we're doing 300 to 500 class and compensation studies per year. So let me pause, and Gray Thurn, let's give them a little bit of explanation about some of the terms that you're going to hear. And if something sounds familiar, I've alerted the staff, we are using no acronyms for this presentation. And if we use an acronym, I'm going to ask them to see me after the meeting, council members. So let's start with a few definitions, Gray Thurn. You're going to hear terms like the Fair Labor Standards Act. So let's talk a little bit about that, Gray Thurn?
Good afternoon, Council. The items that are most important and dear to our heart, of course, is equal pay for equal work. And we did a very big, deep nosedive regarding fair labor standards, because we wanted to make sure that everyone was appropriately assigned, either non-exempt or exempt. And under the Fair Labor Standards Act, specifically the wage in our division, they identify that everyone who is working in the United States should receive a minimum wage. And in that recension of the minimum wage, if there is an instance where the employee in a non-exempt position needs to work in excess of 40 hours, Fair Labor Standards Act has described how that individual's pay should be calculated. I understand from reading, the city of Annapolis has a personnel standard, or I guess guide, if you will. And the mayor currently has flexibility in assigning exempt status versus non-exempt status. So we also not only looked at it from a national level, but we also paid close attention to how Annapolis has interpreted their fair labor standards proceedings as well. Have I lost anybody? Does everybody on board at this point?
I think so.
Okay, alright. Again, if you have any questions as I go through it, please stop me. I sometimes get a little ahead of myself and talk flabber, but it's not intentional. So having said that, we looked at several positions. Specifically, looked at the labor trades positions to ensure that each one of your position descriptions were accurately annotated, non-exempt. And of course, there will be exceptions when you're looking at the supervisory role. Some supervisors, we call them semi-skilled and skilled category, are more administrative than they are hands-on labor. So we wanted to make sure that any non-supervisory job description was accurately annotated as non-exempt, which means they get time and a half when, and only when, they work in excess of 40 hours. Your exempt employees are generally your admin, professional. Some, we call them techie types, your computer programmers, your software engineers. Some of those positions, again, there are just one or two that may also fall in a non-exempt status, but you have to look at those individually. You can't look at them as a family group. And so, we were very pleased to find out that the city of Annapolis is definitely following the rigs. They are definitely in compliance, I did not see any infractions whatsoever.
Okay, thanks. Pause for the council members, any questions thus far?
No hands up, so we're good.
Okay, well again, we want to make sure that we do a level setting, because when we get into the more technical terms around knowledge, skills, and abilities, ADA, and the work, we want to make sure that we answer all of your questions. And we're happy to come back if something is unclear, or whatever, because we are applying what we call our gold standard for the city of Annapolis. So Sherium, be so kind to move to the next slide for me. I want to give you an overview of how we approach this study. And as I mentioned, we do quite a number of these all of the time. And there is a method to how we approach this. And the first step is what we call planning, information review, and discovery. So what do we do? We developed a work plan that we shared with the Office of Human Resource. Tricia was very detailed in saying, "Well, I think this is going to work, Greg, this is not going to work." So we tried to be flexible, to meet employees wherever they were, and at whatever time of day we had to. So we started off with a project work plan. Then we reviewed the prior studies that were done from prior consultants, because we wanted to get a sense of what went well, where the holes were, and where we might add value to. So once we did that, when we began, our team began to review all of the bargaining agreements that were in place. We looked at every one of them. We looked at the code so much that finally the staff said to me, "Please, stop bugging me, Mr. Davis, about the code." Because I wanted to make sure they understood fully what we were about to do. Next, we moved into what we call qualitative investigation. So what does that mean? We interviewed 28 of your leaders there in the city. And I don't think we interviewed any of the council members, but all of the directors were interviewed. We designed an interview guide, we walked them through while we were there, and we talked to them and interviewed them, because we wanted to know where the pain points are. And they were very, very open to us. Next, we started our communication strategy, which was around, we wanted to let people know what the study was all about, and what the review was all about. So we had town hall meetings. We offered town hall meetings so people could ask questions. And one of the questions in working with Tricia and the city manager's office, we always asked, "Let's let people know, no one is going to lose their job, no one is going to have a salary reduced as a result of our review." And so that was the philosophy that we followed. Once we had the town hall meetings completed, we in fact recorded those and put them out on the website, so people could, those who couldn't attend, could at least have the information. We developed what we call frequently asked questions. Because again, we know from doing these kinds of studies, information communication is key. Because we didn't want anyone to say, "I had not heard," "I didn't know about it," or "you didn't touch me." So, one other thing that we do that other firms normally don't do, and I'll get into this in a moment, is once we hear from employees, once we do what are called desk reviews and interviews, that's great data to have. But we go one step further. We go and ask the supervisor to verify and validate that data. Because an employee will say, "This is the work that I do." However, the supervisor may have a different perspective on that. So that's a little bit about the, what we call the investigative part. And again, I'd like to pause, questions?
I think we're good. We're not shy either, so not to worry.
Well, we're going to give you an exam after this, to make sure you understand Flosa, Fair Labor Standards Act, and so forth, so we're glad you're listening closely. The next step in our, I'm sorry, Sherium, back for me. The next step in our methodology was, we wanted to gather some baseline data. So we did what's called an environmental scan. Now, that's a big word, what does that mean? We worked with the Office of Personnel to define who we're going to compare the city of Annapolis to. And we looked at several jurisdictions, and I'll tell you who they are in a moment. All of them were willing to participate in our survey, ask our questions. The only city did not participate, and I'm a little disappointed, was the city of Bowie. We went after them, we promised them donuts and coffee. We offered to come out and sit with them, but of course, it was a very difficult time for them. So, the peer organizations that we compared you to, and you'll see those in a moment. Then we did what's called an employee engagement survey. We asked the city to submit a survey out to the employees, and it gave them plenty of time to respond. And we were hoping for a 30% response rate. Well, we got back about 116 of all of the surveys that we sent out, asking people about the job, asking people about the work. Tell us about what you do. And since we've got such a low response rate, we said to Tricia, "We need more data, because data is the key to doing these types of reviews." So what did we decide to do then? We sent out the survey multiple times, and we had the job, it's called a job analysis questionnaire, sent from the Office of Personnel, because employees in the city wouldn't know us. They wouldn't know who PRM is. And by the way, that's your first test for the council members. Do any of you know what PRM stands for?
Alderman Arnett, you can read it, can you read it? Is your mic on? He probably didn't hear you.
People really matter.
Well, we give you a donut and a coffee. That is exactly it, that is our value statement, that is our core value. And as Tricia will tell you, we stop at no stone unturned to get to the people, because this is important. And that's the philosophy that we followed in this study. Then we got into the analysis phase, just looking at all this data. I mean, we've got interviews, we've got questionnaires. All of this information is a part of what we do. Then we go to the market, and figure out what's going on in the marketplace. Where do you compete for talent? And I got to tell you, there are a lot of counties that I've talked to, like Howard County, said they love the fact that you hire great police officers, and then they come in and steal them away from you. So they're not shy about that. We then do what's called benchmarking or job matching. Because again, we want to see if the job is fitting the right category. And I'm going to pause here, because people often say to me, "Why do these studies take so long?" Well, you can see why. You've got to collect the data, you've got to analyze the data, we've got to go back and double-check the data. Because by the time the data hits my desk, I want to make sure it's been reviewed, reviewed, and reviewed. So then, we end up coming back to the Office of Personnel with what we call recommendations. We're going to share, again, a high-level view of what the data has shown. We're going to share, again, a high-level view of what the data has shown thus far. We're working with your office of personnel to talk about an implementation strategy that once this is accepted, once the report is delivered, how you're going to implement this. I can tell you that a new salary structure has been developed using our data. And we're also going to work with the Office of Human Resources around just what the financial impacts of that are for budgeting purposes. And for each of the scales that we evaluated, we did four separate analysis. We did what's called a living wage analysis. We did internal equity analysis. And those are the kind of things that we apply. And the same thing on the job descriptions. We looked at the job descriptions around, as you heard Graythern talk about, Fair Labor Standards Act. We looked for those outliers in what we call the knowledge, skills, and abilities. So, let me pause for a moment. And Graythern, let's just share a little bit with the council some of the knowledge, skills, and abilities that we found, for example, in the bus driver.
Okay. I, we, currently, City of Annapolis has a bus driver level one and a bus driver level two. But when I actually sat down and interviewed the employees, I realized that the competencies were the same. The certifications were the same. The difference between level one and level two was, of course, seniority and the fact that they can train new employees about the routes. The certifications have to be in place once they're hired, or at least within a limited amount of time after hiring. But the work really wasn't a significant difference between level one and level two. So, my recommendation is that we have a kind of a succession plan so that they get in the door, but within six to maybe eight months, they're actually moved to level two or bus driver two, because the work really isn't that different, other than the ability to train and getting familiar with their routes.
Okay, thanks, Graythern. Any questions thus far? Because again, I want to show you that we got very granular with this study. And Sharon, would you move to the next slide for me?
No, I don't think we have any questions yet.
Okay, terrific. So, the next phase is what we call completed areas of inquiry. I mentioned to you at the beginning, we interviewed twenty-eight of your leaders there. We spent an hour with each one. We had a subject matter expert who was formerly with the state of Maryland conduct the interviews, collect the data for the analysis. And again, we'll share some of that with you. We also interviewed the city manager independently and had great conversations with him. Same methodology was applied with the Office of Human Resources and the information technology. So, again, we're collecting data. We're using every opportunity to talk to every employee who would listen to us or talk to us. We also included what we call focus groups. This is an opportunity to bring employees together, those who didn't answer the survey, to again, participate and give us information. And as you might imagine, some of them are gripe sessions. Our facilitators are trained to listen. I tell them all the time that "Your wise grandmother gave you two ears and one mouth for a reason. So, listen to people carefully." And they did. And we collected the data. Then, if something was unclear, we have what we call circle back meetings. And we're still doing that, going back, turning it over. Did we ask the right questions? Because again, when we do our analysis, we don't leave any stone unturned. Next, we look at the external market. We went to seven municipalities and conducted interviews, collected data. And when the data wasn't adequate, I said to the team, "Let's go collect some more." One of the team members was recently completing a similar study for me at Baltimore County. Same issues around longevity, pay equity. So, I wanted to include him and bring those experiences from Baltimore County so we could really add value to what we were advising the Office of Human Resources. Next, which is part of the methodology, we use surveys, external surveys. The Local Government Personnel Association publishes an annual survey. We have access to their data around pay. And so, again, we use that as supplemental information. The Society for Human Resource Management is a trade association, one of the largest in the country. We use their survey data, in addition to private sector data from the firms Mercer, Powers, and PRM has its own proprietary survey data as well. So, now, we've got the internal information. We've got the external information. Now, we're ready to get into the best practice analysis. So, I can tell you that over two hundred-plus job descriptions have been evaluated and updated. We've looked at titles. We've looked at whether they're exempt or non-exempt. We've even looked at the minimum qualifications. And Graythern, I'm going to pause again and pull you in and talk a little bit about minimum qualifications and what that means and any outliers that we saw.
Okay. For the most part, City of Annapolis is very, very well situated in terms of how they have married the work that's performed on a regular and recurring basis with the minimum quals. My only outlier or standing recommendation is where you require substance testing or drug testing. That really is a condition of employment versus special qualifications. Normally, when you think of special qualifications, for example, it's a certification that you're a master plumber or you have a certain Class B driving license or you are equipped to program IT systems or you have certain programming languages. Those are what we would normally look for in terms of special qualifications. There are special qualifications because the work requires a specialized knowledge, whereas drug testing is something that everyone will be asked to do that is in a particular office or a particular family group. So, that was my only recommendation across the board. But your min quals were spot on. I didn't have any major concerns or did not see any major infractions whatsoever. So, City of Annapolis is very much on point when it comes to your min quals. In other words, what's the basic information that comes, that a person must have when they start working versus the work that's actually required of the employee assigned to the position?
Well, thank you, Graythern. And to the council members, I got to tell you, we have some late-night discussions about knowledge, skills, abilities, and minimum qualifications, because inevitably, the discussion would come to me where employees would say, "Well, the volume of work has increased." And I'm not going to name names, but I got to tell you that some of them said that they're working harder, they're working longer. And again, in our world of classification, Graythern, what do we say about the volume of work?
It's not the volume that impacts the work, because whether you're doing five or ten, your process will be the same. Your timelines may slip, but the work itself, the core work, is still what drives the compensation level. And yes, Greg and I have had some late-night conversations about that. But I think, to be, in all fairness, I realize that, you know, the employees love their jobs, for the most part. And they want to do the best job that they can. But when it comes to compensation and the core work that's involved, the number of items you touch or the number of documents you process or the number of activities that you're responsible for doesn't really change the compensation. However, there's a caveat. If your process is different, in other words, more complex, for example, someone who does contracts. If your contracts are more procurement-related versus high-level contracts where you're talking billions of dollars, several entities, you may find a difference in compensation at the more complex level.
Thanks.
Well, may I ask a question now?
Please.
So, let me kind of extrapolate out. What we're hearing is that the workload has increased and the compensation has not kept pace with the increased workload.
Workload does not always marry out to a change in pay. And what I'm saying, and I don't want to sound very basic, but let's say I'm an accounting tech, for example, and instead of me having two offices to be responsible for processing their procurement applications, I'm now doing it for four. Well, I still have to do the same process, but I'm doing it for four offices as opposed to two. So, instead of me only getting two weeks or one week to get them done, the manager should change the amount of time they allow me to get this work done, but it does not require him to change my pay that is currently assigned.
Okay. Everybody else, are you good? Alderman Tierney?
So, just to rephrase, I guess, the pay is based on core functions, regardless of the workload. And the workload is an issue with management, I guess. It's up to management to say, "This person is taking on too much. I have to distribute the load," but that, but the respective person that's impacted by the workload is not going to get a pay raise because they're doing the same core services. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And to go further with that, management should try to balance the workload. And let's just be clear, sometimes workload is cyclical. For example, in the budget world, most of the beginning of the year may not be as hectic as the end-of-year closeout. Let's also look at logistics and supply. Their work tends to be cyclical. Once everything is in place, it may not get real busy again until they get a new shipment. But does that mean they should get paid more for that period of time? It's really more on managers looking at the work and being able to shift the work so that it's evenly distributed. Now, we can't speak to if there are vacancies. If you're in a situation where you've got vacancies and the work is piling up, then we offer managers other options. For example, we ask a manager, "Can you recognize this employee through non-compensation versus time off or some type of on-the-spot award or some kind of recognition internally?" But that doesn't change the compensation for the remainder of that person's employment in that particular position. So, there are other options to recognize an employee who has gone above and beyond what they were normally assigned. But to change the pay based on the volume of work really is not a good management practice, because work, as we all know, it will change again. You get a new administration. You get a new structure. You can't take the money away. So, we always caution managers to really look at the competencies and the core work that's required, not the amount of work, because you can change that by either hiring more people on board or divvying the work, excuse me, divvying the work out so that it's a balance. Forgive me.
Well, thank, and those are great questions. So, I hope we have responded accordingly.
We do have one more question. Alderman Pendell-Charles has joined us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry I'm late. I'm going to go back to the statement that you made as far as balancing the workload. Suppose you don't have anybody within that department who is even capable of giving that workload to. What's the option then?
Excuse me, I forgot. My mic was off. I apologize. You said, "If there aren't any other people in the office, is it because there are some questions you have to ask? Is it because recruitment? Is it based on recruitment problems? Is it based on succession planning? You don't have any lower graded doing similar work but not at the senior level? There are some other outliers that you must look at before making a final decision."
So, once you look at that and you still can't come up with a solution because you need something, I'm not going to say immediately, but something that's really pressing, what does a manager do in that situation?
Again, you can always reward, I call it reward, but recognize an employee for going beyond what that particular project requires. But on a long-term basis, we advise managers, if you find that something is going to be a long-term basis, in other words, two, three years out, then you should definitely look at having that work reviewed again to see if in fact it requires a change in compensation, as well as look at increasing your staffing levels.
Especially if you have a person who has a special skill set that nobody in that department or maybe even that organization has. That could be a difficulty. Say, and I'm just throwing this out there, if you have a grant and somebody leaves your organization that's in charge of writing that grant, and it's a significant grant, but you don't, and the deadline is coming due, and you don't have anybody to take it over, then you're in a, as folks say, in a pickle. How, in the immediate situation, you're, I guess you just kind of lose out. Is that sort of kind of?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. What I just said is you can recognize that employee that's going beyond the call or, as we say, beyond the scope of the work. You do recognize them. But you, we also recommend that you do not change the work permanent. Do not change the compensation permanently. So, for example, when I was a federal employee and we had to do some cleanup, I made sure that each one of my staff members was recognized for going beyond what their current job description was. But I did not change their pay. I recognized it through, you know, a one-time bonus or time off. They chose whichever one they wanted. But I did not change the work primarily because the cleanup was going to come to an end at some point. So, I couldn't go back and change them back to a different grade level once the cleanup is completed. That's where I'm going with it. Now, if you have a situation where you had five grant writers and, as you said, the one person that could handle this high-visibility grant has left, my recommendation is whoever picks it up, recognize that their work is being, they're going beyond the call. But to say that the job totally changed would be something that an HR person needs to go in and actually talk to that person to make sure that the work is significantly different from what they did. High visibility doesn't always change the process. It just means somebody's breathing down your neck and your deadlines are short. And you recognize that person for that, but that doesn't mean you change the position description and the compensation for the day-to-day regular and recurring work that's required. Once the grant is completed or submitted, now what do you do? Do you take the person back to the job that they were doing before? Or if you go ahead and recognize them for that work that they did above and beyond, stepping in when the person that had it originally is gone, then yes, by all means, we definitely want you to recognize them. It could be compensation, one-time bonus. It could be time off. So, whatever City of Annapolis has in place in terms of how they recognize employees who have picked up work, and I'm talking on a project basis, not a long-term basis, then there are certain avenues that the City of Annapolis can follow, I'm sure. But just on a general level, we're not talking about the outliers. We're talking about just your general level. The fact that I have four offices versus two offices to provide a service to would not require me to change compensation. It would require the manager to look at how much work they have and how many resources they have available to get the work done. We would love to be able to do some position management for the City of Annapolis, which we go in and we look at the structure and we offer opportunities for managers to have what we call succession planning, where we look at, well, if everybody's at a senior level and someone leaves, just as you talked about, then we're in a pickle. How about let's go in, offer some recommendations where we find that are desperately needed so that situations such as you explained can be addressed without overloading someone else?
Thank you.
Um, do you have any questions for me?
That's a great, great question, so please feel free to ask those kind of questions because again, this is what we do all the time and we know as legislators, you're steep in bill analysis and legislation, so please don't hesitate to ask. All right. Okay, thanks Graythorn. And so let's jump right into the next slide that we, we put together for the, for the council. I mentioned to you that we interviewed leaders and they were very, very open and transparent about what's going on. So let me just share with you a couple of things that, that we heard. First of all, we heard that the city offers a very, very positive work environment. And of course, being from, originally from Baltimore, I wanted to have the discussion about crabs, but they didn't necessarily want to hear that all the time. But we heard their generous benefit packages at the city. Conversely, the competition for talent is increasing and that's everywhere. I can tell you with all of the clients that we've worked with, the great resignation is real. People are dropping out of jobs. As I mentioned to you, Howard County loves to come down and poach people away from the City of Annapolis. And so do the other counties, Prince George's County. We were having this discussion with the Office of Human Resources, particularly about the police department. It's very, very competitive, but the generous benefit packages that are being offered are very, very welcome. Some of the managers and one of the councilmen was just pointing this out, was the staffing levels are concerning. The administrative support is inadequate, they say. Technology resources, you can never buy enough technology from my experience. They're all, everybody wants the latest and the greatest, but it comes with a cost. In some cases, we saw lowering of department status. In other words, they went from a department to a unit. And I found that interesting. We also heard about assigning employees higher-level duties with no provision for retroactive payments. And we're working with your Office of Human Resources on payrolls because we're looking at that very, very closely. Then when we got into the job descriptions, again, we ran various tests. We like to call them audit with a little A, but they're desk audits. So that's where we started looking at, what are the outdated titles? What are the knowledge, skills and abilities that are no longer required? What are the minimum qualifications? And you heard Graythorn speak to that point as well. And in some cases, we saw what we call department misalignment. In other words, and again, I'm sure he wouldn't mind me sharing this, but in your Department of Planning and Zoning, you've got a new director there who came in and looked at that and he said, something's not right here and he wanted to fix it. So again, we've been working with him around, how do you get that department aligned to his vision, hitting the goals and objectives? So those are the kind of things that we heard from the leaders. Let me pause. Any questions?
Well, I'll ask, when the lowering of department status, that happened a couple of administrations back. So when those, that issue came up, was the interest in restoring those departments to department status or just the fact that they were lowered to a manage, to an office instead?
Again, I think the concern was they were lowered to an office status as opposed to a department.
Okay, but no interest in changing it?
Well, there was some interest in changing, but again, we didn't, our scope didn't include alignment on that.
Oh, Sheila?
Uh, Aldo woman Tierney?
Thank you. Since you touched upon competition for talent and, and other counties, quote unquote, poaching our employees.
Coaching.
Yeah, coaching or poaching, poaching. I do have a, a question. So increased salaries elsewhere, if you will, are they more of, as it affects Annapolis, are they more of a hiring obstacle? In other words, you know, we're trying to hire and, and we just don't have the salary? Or are they more a threat to retainage, to retaining? Or is it, you know, sort of equal both ways? I, I just want to know what's, what's pushing that? The raise, the increased salaries, is it due to losing, losing employees or not gaining employees?
Well, that's, that's an excellent question and let me address that. What I heard from, what we heard from the managers was the competition for talent and wages. It's always about the pay. And as I mentioned, this great resignation is re, is real, but people are coming to a job, getting the training and then moving on, or some are just dropping out. And I want to pause for a moment because one of my other colleagues has joined us. This is Peter Kennedy. And I asked Peter to join us and Peter was, has been with the Office of the Control of the Currency. And a little bit about Peter's background, Peter has been with PRM for, Peter, would I say over 20 years? Would I be accurate?
Uh, yeah, well, with PRM, but I've, I've been at this too long. I've, I've been working at compensation for over 40, actually.
But Peter is a expert in compensation and he's working with very, very large federal agencies, which include the Office of the Control of the Currency. In fact, it's, it's interesting, we're doing quite a bit of work right now for the Food and Drug Administration, where Peter is involved in what's called the CURE Act. But Peter, I don't know if you heard the question from the council member about competition for salary? Could you comment?
Well, yeah, sure. And I, I don't understand, of course, I just, if you haven't already said this, Gregory, while I am a subject matter expert, I have not been involved in this particular study for the City of Annapolis. So I don't know about all the particular circumstances that you're, you're facing, but I can speak from my experience in working with other federal agencies and other organizations, both here in the greater Washington metropolitan area and, and also, you know, more broadly nationwide. And I would say that it's a little bit of both always, in the sense that what, what creates the need to attract someone is, is often the, the fact that, that you weren't able to retain someone in a particular job and they went to work elsewhere. So it's almost like two, two, more generally, it's like two sides of the same coin. And then it just, it depends on each organization's particular turnover rates and, and what other, I would say, elements in the total rewards package are, are present that can help counter what may be a competitive deficiency in pay, if, if that's, if that's the situation that would cause people to stay because of a work-life balance benefit or, or, or some other aspect of the total rewards package that is, that is attractive.
Thanks, Peter. Did we answer your question?
Well, as a follow-up, could you be more specific with Annapolis? Are we losing people because of, because of salary?
I, I don't know. I, many, some organizations do exit interviews where they ask a question, why, why are you leaving? And they then tabulate those results over, over a period of time. And so I, I don't know whether management at the City of Annapolis is doing that or not, but that would be one way of answering that question.
Sure, thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Trish?
Yes?
Maybe I can help with that. We don't tabulate our exit interviews, but one of the things that's come clearly and part of this study, which we've already talked about, Greg has already mentioned, is that the way our scales were constructed with the longevity steps, that, that is hampering both bringing people onboard at the appropriate rate of pay based on their experience. You know, you don't, when you're hiring above the entry level step, because that person's well above an entry level in terms of talent and, and years of experience, we end up having to put them in a rate of pay that sits them at, close to longevity and then they stay there with no expectation of a performance-based increase in contribution there, for their contribution. And so we were hearing in, in both the challenges that the hiring managers were having in enticing people to come to work for us and when people left, that, you know, getting to a certain place where they are kind of waiting, you know, for that longevity to kick in, it was, it was affecting retention as well. And so with that knowledge, we made sure that was addressed as part of the class and comp study.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to introduce yourself because they thought I was still chairing and the mayor has joined us, so.
I'm the, I'm the deputy mayor. How you all doing? Oh, no chance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I hear some references to federal government employees and all, and if you could provide me with, if you haven't already, two or three things that you see similar to what we have with the federal government and two or three things that you find different that's impactful in the City of Annapolis as referenced by the federal government?
Sure. Let me switch to Graythorn first. Graythorn, can you speak to similarities that you've seen with the federal government? Graythorn has, I'm going to say many years with the federal government and couch it that way. In fact, one of the studies that we're working on, Graythorn is helping us out also on, is the Food and Drug Administration, which is undergoing some significant challenges. And so Graythorn, can you speak to a couple of the similarities and differences that you see?
Okay. For example, staffing levels, that is something that is the same regardless of whether you're at the fed or state or local levels. There's always a challenge in retaining persons who are in, in a position for money and not for experience or personal gain. Admin support positions are something that everyone is, it's like a revolving door. You get, say, an admin person in, admin support person, admin associate officer or an admin specialist in, and you might be able to get them there for maybe a year or two and then they're out the door. When I was at, I can't tell you exactly which one because I've signed an NDA, but one of my last assignments was in the intel group. And what I did, I did a review of all of the admin assistants, admin specialists and admin support positions. And that allowed me to create what we call career ladders. So entry level may be out of high school with six months or some kind of clerical certificate. And then six months after they've been in the job, we promote them to the next level. And every year we promote them until they get to what we call the journeyman level. It doesn't keep them there forever, although some managers probably would like to do that, but that's against the law. You got to let people grow. But it does give managers anywhere from two to three years of grooming people and benefiting from not only their learning expertise, but also in compensation because you're not paying them the full rate. And most employees will stick around to get to that full performance level if it's two years or three years down the road. So it's a win-win situation in those circumstances. Technology, as Greg has said, that's hard. We came up, the federal government has tried to come up with different incentives, recruitment bonuses, as well as retention bonuses. So that's something that we could, we being PRM, could look at if Greg wants to assign this to me and make a decision as to how we can go about offering you a package. So based on, for example, cyber is going to be at the top of the scale versus someone who understands what we call shelf life program. So they can take something off the shelf, not literally, figuratively, something that's already established and manipulate it to fit a particular office in City of Annapolis versus your cyber folks or now it's artificial intelligence, AI, that's the hot thing. So in, in technology, it is always a constant revolving door. We try to be as close to incentives and offering them that private industry doesn't have. Private industry tends to eat them up and some have gone to private industry and I'll be honest with you, and then call and say, I want to come back home because these people are crazy. I'm working 10, 12, 13 hours a day, I'm on call over the weekend and we don't have that stress level in nonprofits or government facilities, federal or local government. So there are some trade-offs. It really depends on the individual and what they are there for. We have been on college campuses recruiting, trying to entice junior college, college-level students to come and do internships. That's something else that we've offered in the federal government that City of Annapolis may want to look at. You know, go in and say, hey, look, you know, if you come and, and do an internship with us, sometimes it's paid, that's up to your budget. But it also gives that person a sense of family, if you will, because you allow them a mentor, you actually assign someone, you don't just drop them there and they get groomed so that by the time they walk across the stage, they give us a second look, not a laugh. So there are some things that you can put in place that don't always come out to be money. Other options are available. It's just what City of Annapolis is willing to do. What, what are you comfortable in doing? And quite frankly, when we're on college campuses and we offer incentives such as, you know, a tuition assistance or internships or working with some notable person that has developed some program that's the new hot item, we've been able to successfully recruit people right out of college. Now, I'm going to be honest with you, once they get three, four years in, we're scratching our heads, what else can we offer? It, it just becomes about money for some. But again, I've seen people leave and then they get over there and the money is great, but you know, they get eaten up with private industry because the demands are a lot more. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
All right. It, it's interesting that Graythorn could say that because we all know that the, the big elephant in the room in this region is Amazon. And I can't tell you how many people who are, that we see who want to leave Amazon and get public service work. We recently completed the study for Anarondo County, as Tricia knows, and we ran into some of these same issues. So again, we bring those best practices. All right? Any other questions? If not, I want to move ahead.
Okay, well, can we get the, the copy of the study for Anarondo County? I'd be interested for a comparison. Is that, that be available?
That's something I can certainly ask them.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, Sharon, can you move us ahead? So we, we talked a little bit about the scan that we conducted. And so these were the organizations that responded, shared their information, City of Frederick, Anaronda County, Howard, and of course, we, we struggled with some with the City of Gaithersburg. We wanted Bowie, but Bowie was a bit of a stretch. I asked Tricia many times, called every one of her friends over there, but we still were not successful. So here's some of the, some of the key findings we wanted to share with you around what we heard from some of these organizations. Many of them use what's called the Local Government Personnel Association and other survey sources when establishing pay rules and scales. A lot of them focus on years of experience. Peter Kennedy and I are going through this right now with a federal agency around years of experience versus relevant years of experience. So again, it's a hot button, not only in local government, but the federal government as well. And then if there are pay adjustments, they said, we try to pay them quickly, because again, we want to make sure people are whole, if you will. And then we also asked them about which job evaluation models they're using, and we'll share this with you as we get further into the discussion. We found the majority of them using some form of a point factor evaluation model, and I'll, I'll share that with you as we get further along. Okay, any questions on any findings from the scan? Sharon, can you move the, okay. So these were just some of the details that we've gotten, when we looked at the various peer groups, Anaronda County, some of the things they said about fire, police, and the jobs in general. We did the same thing with Howard County, and I keep saying, Howard County loves the City of Annapolis, because they say that, as the attorney said, they love to come and take your well-trained people and bring them on board. City of Alexandria, same thing. City of Frederick, almost the same thing. So again, we had all of this wealth of data to look at from these comparators. Sharon, move the slide, please. We also looked at Prince George's County, City of Gaithersburg, Howard County, and the compensation analyst who was working with me, who is in surgery and unfortunately couldn't be on the call, that's why I asked Peter Kennedy to join us. We had just completed a similar study for Baltimore County. And again, I will certainly ask them if you'd like to see that, to share that study, because it is public information. We'd be happy to share it with you with their permission. Okay. Any questions on the comparators?
They seem like good ones, thank you very much, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Okay, Sharon, let's, so we're getting into some of the findings, some of the things that we heard, or some of the things we saw, and we think there's some opportunities really here. First of all, when we looked at the labor and trades, there were 101 employees across 33 different titles. That's a lot of titles for an organization, you know, for a family of that size. Look at the clerical and technical, there were 31 employees across 21 titles. And then contrast that with police and fire, more employees, less titles. So we think there's an opportunity there, particularly around job titles. Questions, surprises?
I didn't see any, thank you.
Okay, great. Sharon, would you move to the next? So now, we're going to get into some early findings for you, and keep in mind, we have delivered all of the market data to the Office of Human Resources. So we, we've delivered the data, and we're, we're going back, doing some tweaking and some fine tuning. Again, I've said to our team, yes, I would like to have the study completed, but our goal is to get it right. And whatever that means, we want to get it right before it's finished. So here's some things you ought to know, and Tricia, again, knows this all too well. Seventy percent of the employees are at the top of the pay grades. Little room for movement.
So that, that means the longevity steps?
Right.
Yeah.
Seventy percent. We saw some pay equity issues over in city planning, and again, we're working through that with the director and with Tricia. One of the reasons this study, I was told it was commissioned, is because over in the Office of Emergency Management, there was a pay equity. And we, Tricia studied the position, we studied the position, and we studied it again, and we have a recommendation. Other things that we saw in the pay model review, there were no provisions for retroactive payments, and again, we're working with your Office of Human Resources on that. There's nothing there in place right now for in-grade adjustments. So if there's an adjustment needed, we need to have some tool, as Graythorne mentioned, to help. And then we took another analysis and applied what we call the Living Wage Act. So we wanted to see which employees were making less than the living wage. And again, we'll share that information once the data is all finished. From a classification standpoint, personal regulations haven't been updated since 1992. Well, we see that all the time, so that's nothing unusual. We did see the unusual civil service advisory board, and I understand now that, that that has, we, we found a fix for that. We've already talked about, I had Graythorne walk you through some of the knowledge, skills, and abilities. We think there's some significant opportunities for career ladder opportunities, and we've talked quite a bit about the volume of work, which again, from a classification standpoint, really doesn't apply. We also heard about hazardous working conditions. We, Graythorne and I had long discussions about the bus drivers and the hazardous working conditions, but I won't go down that path too much more. But again, it's, it's about the work. And we looked at several job evaluation methodologies for you, and we'll share our recommendation. And I'm going to pause, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Tricia, I wonder, give you an opportunity, any questions on your end or comments? Tricia?
No, we're doing just great. Just want to make sure the council gets their opportunity.
Absolutely. All right, let's go to the next slide. Again, these are early findings. We looked at the current salary structure, both the pros and the cons. We looked at internal equity, living wage, we talked about it. We saw an opportunity here, in fact, we had some late-night discussions around what we call the outliers, priorities, and concerns. This is the first time I've ever seen a scale where executives were included with the rank and file. So we have a recommendation for you there, and there's a reason that you want a separate scale for executives. And Peter, are you still, can you hear me, Peter?
Yes, I can, I'm, I'm here.
Can you comment on why you would need a separate scale for executives for us?
Well, just a, a very quick comment is that when you reach the executive level, there's no longer an opportunity to be promoted up through the structure. And so typically, what you find in most organizations, if the executives are not on a separate range or structure, is sort of like an inverted pyramid, where you see the range being much broader at the top for executives, since, since they can't move up, there's, there's more breadth to the range so they can move through a, a broader range.
Okay, thanks Peter. And you see that both in the public and private sector, correct?
Yes, that's, that's, that's exactly right.
So I wanted to point that out to you, because again, we're going to share with you some data. Department of Planning, similar concerns about, we've talked about that, some inequities there. Tricia mentioned the longevity steps, and our experience is that longevity steps do negatively impact pay schedules, policy, and performance. We just went through this with Baltimore County, and again, we were able to help them move from this longevity policy. And they're doing it in phases, but it's working very, very well. And finally, we're going to look at your pay rules policy and offer some best practices around that. All right? Questions?
Hold on, Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I speak to the exec, what do you call it, the executive, where do I see it? Separate scale for executives. You called it a concern, but from looking at the budget before us, it, it seems like it must have been a recommendation, because in our, in our, in our budget, surprisingly so, we have an executive pay scale that we are to vote on. And so I'm assuming that that was your recommendation, speaking specifically of E1, E2, and E3, with the respective ranges. Is that, is that something you recommended?
Yes, we shared the market data with the Office of Human Resources, and the recommendation for a separate scale for the executives.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Hold on, Phil, listen.
Thank you. Along that same line, in looking at the proposed scale, did you actually make recommendations as for each of the positions? Or was it an overall recommendation to eliminate the longevity steps?
Our recommendation was to eliminate the longevity steps first, because again, it negatively impacts the pay schedules and pay policy. And if you'll hold that point, I'm going to share with you a little bit of a document that may ask, that may answer the question, we'll go deeply.
Sharon, would you? I do want to clarify, though, for those in the exempt service of which all of the executives are in, there are no longevity steps, that is just for the civil service employees.
Okay, the scale that was given to us?
Is the executive pay scale.
In the ordinance, I guess it is.
She's talking about the ordinance, which is...
The one that's attached?
Your question seemed to be centered around the pay scale for the non-represented. Or were you asking about the executive pay, pay ranges?
The executive scale?
No, the executive scale was a separate scale with three ranges, E1, E2, and E3, and those are for department directors.
Okay, that is within the diagram that's attached to the...
Yes, it's up, it's up on the very top of that diagram, and the scale for non-represented is down at the bottom.
Okay, well, I assume we're going to talk about that. So I'll hold that question, because I think I still need further explanation. Thank you.
Okay.
You wanted to hold for a slide, you going to show us Gregory, right?
Yes. Let's continue, Sharon? Again, a couple findings that we looked at, we looked at the AF and P scales, and we noted that the salary ranges were very wide, and there was some overlap in unusually narrow executive ranges, for example. And again, this gets back to the point of, we wanted to, we recommended that the executive be put on a separate scale, if you will. And again, just reiterating that we saw some inequity, some equity issues in the Department of Planning and zoning. Sharon, next slide, please. So, let's look at a little bit more deeply at where we, what we saw in our analysis. One, these were the 16 job families that we looked at, and what you're seeing here is what we saw, how you stack up against the market. And Peter, I'm going to ask you to jump in, just, just explain a little bit about the mean and the medium, if you will, and the midpoint. Could you, Peter?
Yeah, sure, Gregory. So, most organizations will, in picking a market reference point, pick the median statistic, which is also known as the 50th percentile, and that would be the number that is right in the middle of a sample of numbers that consists of, of the survey, any, any particular survey. The mean is also known as the average, and that would be just summing up all the numbers in the sample and then dividing by the number of observations. Sometimes that can be skewed by a few very large numbers. So we tend to prefer the median as the target statistic. The other point to make here is that some organizations, in an interest to fill hard-to-fill positions, critical skill positions, Graythorne mentioned some of the IT positions where there's high turnover, they might pick another statistic as the target, something higher than the median, maybe as high as the 75th percentile. So the 75th percentile would represent that number where only 25% of the sample are paying more, and 75% of the sample are paying less. Having said that, a reputable organization that surveys this every year, that many organizations consult, it's World at Work, it's the professional organization for compensation professionals, their survey indicates that about 85% of organizations target the median statistic when evaluating how well they stack up to the market. These particular ratios that you see here represent the actual, or in the case of jobs that have more than one person in them, the average salary divided by either that average or mean statistic on the one hand, or the median statistic over in the far-right column. And we generally think that pay is competitive if it is within plus or minus 10% of the target statistic. So as you see where we've drawn the line in the middle of this table, we've, we've characterized as not or below competitive, those ratios that are below 90%. So any ratio that's between 90% and 110% is what we generally consider to be competitive pay.
Thanks, Peter. Any questions?
Hold on a minute, Ned.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of column, row stubs here that I don't understand, programs and general administration. What do those mean?
General administration, well, these are the job families. When we did the analysis, we did the analysis based on the job families presented to us. And there's 16 job families, if you will, that we looked at. So when you talk about programs, hold on a second, let me pull that up. Falling in the program area, you have a childcare director, special events coordinator, there's an environmentalist we looked at, no harm, communication engineer coordinator. So those position titles fell within programs. And what was the other one you asked, I'm sorry?
General administration.
General administration? When we looked at that job family, the jobs that, hold on a second, let me pull that up. General administration, first off, Listy Alderman is in that category, the city manager...
Really underpaid.
You're dragging it down.
No comment, sir. But again, that was the job family. Those are just some of the titles that we looked at.
And public works, I mean, look at how low that is.
Well, we mentioned early on that the public works is one of the lowest. The city harbor master, that is a bit of a unicorn. We couldn't find a match anywhere, and so that's why you don't see any numbers there.
Thank you.
Other questions? And I hope you find this helpful. Sharon, next slide for me. Okay. Peter was talking a little bit about this. When you look at the salary grades, you know, we looked at the A scale, the F scale, the P scale, and for marketing comparisons, he talked about the calculated midpoint. And this is what this slide reflects as to where we pointed at the midpoint. Peter, am I correct there?
Yeah, I think I was assuming in the prior table that we were, we talked about actual salaries, and in this case, the only distinction is that we're looking at the midpoints of these ranges, as you correctly stated, and then comparing those to the mean or median market rates for the positions that are in those ranges.
Thanks, Peter. And again, Peter is, we're happy to have him because Joshua Hutton, who was the compensation subject matter expert, as I mentioned before, is out on surgery, so I couldn't have him here today, and Peter was gracious with his time. Any questions on this slide?
Alton Arnett?
I have to admit, I'm a little frustrated because we are spending a lot of time talking about what you're doing and not finding out what you've done. Will it become apparent to us what these findings mean when we see the report? Like, I'm looking at A11. Seeing the mean and median there, which are above 100, but it doesn't really help me understand what that means.
Maybe I could just jump in to say that this is, these percentages, all of these percentages here actually represent, in each case, two different numbers. And they're a way to gauge how what you're paying in the city of Annapolis compares to what other organizations are paying for the same positions. So when we say, for example, at A11, that the A11 for the city of Annapolis is at 102%, 102.4% of the median, what that means is that your midpoint for that range is, in effect, 2.4% higher than either the average of the, you know, the median of the midpoints of other ranges in other structures, or it's the median of the salaries of people in those ranges that were priced, that were matched to surveys. And so, for that particular example, A11, you're just a little bit above the market. But as I said earlier, if those, if these ratios are anywhere between 90% and 110%, then we consider you to be competitive, that you're paying enough to attract and retain, based on, you know, pay alone. Does that help answer your question?
Well, I guess when we see the report, but A11 cuts across a lot of departments, right? And with various KSAs for the people in that pay scale, so it's kind of an amorphous number at this point without actually seeing the report.
Yeah, I would say that's a point well taken. There's detail behind these ratios--
So--
--there, job by job.
Trish?
So, Alton Arnett, you have the position summary. Position summaries indicate which positions have what grade. And so their market data is looking at comparable grades, and you can look at your position summary to determine what positions are assigned per grade. If you would like me to create a report for you that I, that rather than the way that's listed, group them by grade, I can do that for you and send you that information.
So the A group is the non-public safety, P and F for fire and police.
Correct, correct.
And so that's all the departments. And you're looking at every pay level A11 across every department, and there will be different KSAs in that A11 depending upon what department, if you're working in public works versus working in IT.
Right. And the value of a position isn't that all factors match equally, it's the cumulative evaluation of all of those factors through most, as they said, most agencies use a point factor evaluation system. This is just comparing how others are paid in other jurisdictions. We did a heavy choice around benchmark positions so that we could gather as much information across those comparators as possible. And so this is, this is an example of what that has translated into by grade. But for us, you can easily tell what positions are assigned to which grade through that position summary. And I'm more than happy to create that in such a way that I have it grouped by grade.
So as you know, we're preparing to approve a budget that has pay consequences as a result of these recommendations. But the frustrating part, as I said, we know what they're doing, we just don't know what they've done. And without seeing the report, it's really hard to evaluate any increase in budget spending without really knowing what's in the details here. So I don't know, when will we see those details? Before we have to pass the budget, or after?
Mr. City Manager, sorry. The report will be finished, or Jody, sorry?
So we have the market data already. And so, what you have here, what they're trying to go over for you is the feedback around the market data collection. We'll talk separately and figure out how that can be presented to you as to what is the detail around that. But what they're trying to give you the background on is all of the methodology that goes into creating that information, and how those scale determinations were made. Using benchmark data, using the ability to evaluate what other comparators are doing in comparison, in contrast to the city.
So, the results of the study, if adopted, have a budget impact, and it has a budget impact in the current year, and presumably it will have continuing impacts in the out years. And I don't think we've seen any indication of whether that's linear, or whether that's going to be a nonlinear increase, or how do we interpret it. So even if we adopt a budget this year that sees a particular year impact, are we going to be able to know what the out-year impacts of adopting the new scales, the N and E and those sorts of-- I mean, it's just, it just feels still like a pig in the book. It's hard to know what we're buying or buying into here.
So the scales that you have before you already, in structure, you can see the non-represented scale, and you can see that we have not made any changes to our pay language as to merit increases being on an annual basis, which is a step increase each year. So I think it's an easy extrapolation from that as to how somebody progresses through the scale, and therefore what the value of that is.
So no, I understand the logic of making the steps smaller and more frequent, but that's not budget neutral. And I think the number in the budget is 118 or 181 or something is the impact of that in fiscal '25. No?
No.
So is it budget neutral?
It's, I can't say in all cases it's budget neutral, but I will say that we developed this information right before we had the proposed budget. So we used this new scale information to formulate the department's budgets. Even in all cases, with the represented groups, we used what we thought we were going to use to populate the budget, all right? That $181,000 number that you're referring to was a reserve in case this study comes up with recommended compensation changes for classes, because it's also doing a classification study. It may say that certain positions are going to need, are recommending upgrades. We wanted to have some money set aside for those things that we don't know yet from the study. What we did have is their market analysis. We wanted to move forward with the pay scale structure. And the reason that you, you're not going to see a huge fiscal impact because we're putting people on the new scale at the step that's closest to what they're making in June 30. We're putting them very close to their current salary without paying them less. So it's either, it's going to be very comparable. And then at their next, their annual date, they get either a 4% or a 3% increase, depending on where they're at. The upper level's 3%, the lower level's 4. So in general, you could say the fiscal impact going forward should be somewhere between 3% and 4% annually for salary increases, provided everybody's going up a step every year.
I understand all of that, but the question remains, there's two questions. Is it budget neutral moving from one to the other? I think I'm hearing you say not quite, but close. And then, is it budget neutral overall time, or is it just budget neutral in fiscal '25? And there's a tail where as we go into the full implementation of this, we're going to find that each year there's going to be more and more impact of adopting to the new system.
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. The balance of this is that we're also doing labor negotiations at the same time. And we've taken this scale, and largely by the work of our consultants and our internal staff, and matched it up to current grades where people are now. So they're not going to be making less, but they may be making a little bit more. And then whether it's at, they're at the beginning of the scale, like 1 through 10, they may get a 3% or a 4% increase, and then the latter part, and that's just based on getting their next step up. So that gives, and that's been the basis largely of our negotiations, and that's been attractive to the unions so far, with two out of three, and we'll be bringing this to you, is that there is no longer a longevity step, and it's predictable. And the range that the steps are providing are within the range of what we're seeing in the marketplace being offered by our other communities. So we'd be wrong to say it's budget neutral, but it's very predictable. And it's very predictable based on, if you're at the top of your scale, you're not going to get much more. But if you're at the bottom, each year you may get it if you get a satisfactory evaluation, a 3% or a 4% increase. It used to be that our scale between steps were how much? Right. And so that's no longer the case, and it's very consistent. And I think the unions have by and large felt that very attractive because it's predictable to them, too. So we're not taking someone, we haven't eliminated anyone's jobs, and we are putting people at or around where they are now, not below. And then, you know, let's say you have an employee who is getting a bump because there's, of their, the matching of their scale is 1% or 2% within the range of where they are now, and then on, you know, August 1st, they get their evaluation, they may get another 3% or 4% depending on where they are on the scale. But it's, that's really the essence of it. It's not, it's not very complicated. But I can certainly understand why you're asking the questions because you haven't been in the middle of the negotiations like we have.
A month from now, we have to have passed a budget. And a month from now, we know, will presumably be done with all of the contracts. We're done with two out of three, and--
Three out of four, I'm sorry. There are two asked me.
Three out of four, right. And it sounded positive with the last meeting you just had before this meeting. But I guess my question is still, is it budget neutral? If it's not, it sounds to me like it's, the new system will be paying more for salaries than under the old system, but not a lot, it sounds like, but we don't have that number. But then, is that only a little bit more so that if we're in fiscal '26, we could look at, well, if we were under the old system, we would be paying this, but under the new system, we're paying that. Because when things get initiated, they can have one impact, but have a compounding impact and a long tail that could be, we're committing in this budget to pay increases that could be, and I'm not saying this is the case, but could be significantly more. And we don't have an answer to that question. Stop asking.
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. Actually, you do, because you have a scale that is the steps, whether it's 3% or 4%, depending on where you're on the scale, and you don't have the longevity steps, so it's very predictable. And it really, and we'll be bringing the contracts forward to you, you'll find that they're solid contracts for both sides. The three unions liked them. We liked it because we thought it was both predictable, eliminated the longevity. And it's not, I'm not going to say it's conservative because, but it's within the range of where we are now in terms of cost of living. And we're in the process of hopefully getting closer with police, but that one's a little bit more complicated because of hiring factors and other issues we're dealing with. But I actually think it's a very predictable budget going forward, and one that you all will control because it'll be predicated on future contracts. And if you decide you want to throw, you know, large colas on top of those, that'll start to drive the costs in a different direction. But you'll be able to see how it affects each employee and each employee group very, very predictably. And that, I can say, from experience in this negotiation. Yes.
So I need to clarify that the scale is intended to represent both the cost of living and the merit increase. To your question, I can start to talk about details, but it's probably not the venue. When I analyze a non-represented group, I found out that when you have some people on the scale programmed for a 5.361% raise, and others on the scale that are going to get less than that, the average for the group that we currently have hired is 2.5%. But remember, we were putting colas on top of that, of 2% or 3%, which means that group could be seeing a 5% versus now it's 3% or 4%, predictable. And the only time the scale moves is if market value analysis shows we're no longer midpoint close to the market. So-- So for some groups, it could be a little more. For other groups, it could be a little less overall as a group. So I, I have, we've done some of that analysis, but there's a lot of data behind it. And as Tricia says, we have schedules with the positions and the market analysis and all that, but it's, it's a lot. So it depends on how you want to see that. Can we summarize it in a way that-
I understand the logic. I understand the predictability and I understand the appeal, both to the employees and to us where we're not doing colas and so forth. What I do not know is the number, the dollar amount for this fiscal '25 and for out years. And for out years, what I'm more concerned about is, is it something that somehow is an escalator in it that we're not understanding? And that's, I mean, that's just two simple questions.
Everybody will get a 3% or a 4% raise every year that these scales are in place.
And they aren't.
And unless they hit the top of the scale.
So in summary, you're saying we can count on a 3% to 4% increase annually?
In salaries annually for all groups.
That's what we'll be looking at, right? So this is an on-out years, right?
And the only, and the only time that we will see, you said budget neutral, only if we have upgrades that we need to give to individual positions where those positions are going to change grades, there will be a, a non-budget neutral increase for them, but we don't know those totals yet.
Because they're reclassified.
Because they're part of the classification study part and we have not implemented that, which is why we tried to set aside a little more for those.
I'll leave it to the finance committee to get our number.
Altoni.
Yeah. Oh, who is it? Me now?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to try to structure my question so that my constituents could probably understand the answer because right now I don't even, I mean, I don't know what's in the budget and, and I don't know how you budgeted it. For example, I have to look at '09-24, which is not even in the budget book. And as my colleague reminded me, that ordinance is just, was, was told that it was just because of the Central Services Department, but the meat of all these changes is in this ordinance. Okay, so help me out here. Somewhere from this data that perhaps the consultants can explain, you went from an A20 and in this '09-24, that A20, that A20 is either an E1 or an E2 or an E3, of which, if I'm an E1, I have a salary range of 119 to 208,000. If I'm an E2, I have a salary range of 137 to 239,000 plus or minus 1,000. An E3 of 158,000 to 276 plus change. So that's a big range. And, and the, and the struggle I have is that it's not clear what's in front of us. But what I do know is that if we approve this budget and this ordinance, we're giving you that blank check.
So if you would, I can provide you-
How did you budget it? I mean, with due respect, I know I respect you, but how did you budget this? How did you budget in the, the, specifically the E scales? Yeah.
I've been through probably six different of these kinds in three different communities.
And so have these guys.
No, no, in three different communities. So, and, and the executive scale is always the red herring because it's higher. And I get that. And, and I, and I've been exhorting to my colleague over there, the point being is we didn't say this person's going to be here or this person's going to be there. That was data that we were given and provided on the scale. And I would like to have the director, or excuse me, the chief, because it's not longer.
The manager. I said earlier, to explain how the executive scale was derived and the idea of marrying people at or where they are now is going forward.
So Greg, I don't want to take your, your voice here, but we received the information from the consultants. The market analysis was done by the consultants. As you know, and as was said at the very beginning, every director and executive level position was surveyed. And that information was built into a combination of the classification, discussions held and the interviews held with the individuals in those positions, along with the market information that came back. And then Greg, if you will just take it from there as to what methodology and what recommendations were made to the city.
Could I make it more specific?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but so if you, Greg, let's take A20 and you have the mean and the medium. So how did that A20 translate into an executive scale? What, what do those numbers mean? What, what's the, I see a lot of percentages, but I don't know what the, what the trigger is for it to jump to an executive scale. What, what are those percentages telling us?
I think you're looking at A17 probably, Greg.
Any one of them, really. Did Greg hear my-
You're looking at page 17.
I'm looking at what's on the screen. Yeah.
Page 15. I'm looking at my notes because I don't have my compensation analyst here who did the actual work. And I apologize for that because as I mentioned, he's in surgery, he had surgery today. But that's something I can, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I feel terrible. I hope he's doing well.
Yeah. Well, again, last I heard, he's, he's doing, he's doing well. And one of the reasons I had him involved in this is because we went through the same thing with Baltimore County. So what I would like to do is to take that back and come back to the, the council with a response because I want to make sure you've got the level of detail that you need. And I just don't have it at this point.
Okay. But the city-
So I made note of that.
I just want to, I, I need to note, Greg, that the recommendation, which one of the things you've covered already is the recommendation is that the executive scale is an open range.
Yeah.
That in the presentation that you have on page 17, you have the market data that was fed into the recommended salary range.
Right.
And that the consultants indicated to us, based on their professional work, which positions by title went into which executive grade.
That is correct.
And I want to make sure that's understood. We didn't sit and say this director goes here or this person goes there. That came from the consultant and, and based on the market data that they derived at and then recommended to us. So that wasn't something where we, we sat down and moved it around.
That is, that, oh, I'm sorry. We, we did not look at, we looked at not the individuals, but we looked at the work and from our analysis and the comparative analysis, which is how we always approach these types of studies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess the confusion for me and I think for my colleague, we're looking at the page that's attached to '09-24. And there are changes. First of all, there is now a group as opposed to A and F and P. There are Es and Ns. So that's a new labeling that we have no clear understanding about. And then our policy, I'm going to say policy, has been that all of our directors are on 20, whether it's a step or whatever you call it, they're all on 20, which means that we would expect when we see this sheet that they're on the same step or same indicator on this form, and they are not.
Okay.
So somebody made that change. So that's what we're trying to get to. How did this come about?
Okay, okay. For, if you're talking about the N versus, and the E, let me just explain. AFSMI and the non-reps were on the A scale, going all the way, we had an A1 all the way up through A20. We've now split off the non-reps from the AFSMI scale because at the time that we presented the budget, we were not at a point with AFSMI where we could say, yes, they are okay with this new scale and moving forward. So we knew we'd have the same scale still. So we created an N scale that mirrored the A scale groupings, the grades that we had before. Nonrepresented only in the N scale. That's why we have a N, it's because it's nonrepresented. If you notice, on the N scale, we have peeled off A19 and A20, or N19 and N20. Those, those grades on the old scale were the manager of HR and the manager of ITS.
And N-A-18. A-18 is E3.
Now, I think she's saying E2 is the one-
Hold on, hold on. Let's just say that if you look at the N scale, we peeled off 19 and 20, correct?
IT was peeled off to become an E2.
So those groups that were, so Tricia and Brian Pakwin were the only A19s, correct? Then there are several A20s. The rest of the directors were A20s. Those are now either, most of us, including the managers, went into the E2 grouping in accordance with the consultant's recommendation. The E1 only has two employees in there.
So you're saying that the consultant recommended that the director of emergency management was not to be in the same groups with the other directors?
No.
Because he's in E2 as opposed to E3.
Correct. Their recommendation includes the larger departments of public works. Now, wait, am I right? Public works, police and fire and the city attorney and public works, right? No, no? Okay, the director of public works. So those larger public safety departments and the city attorney are in that group of E3.
So because OEM doesn't have a large number like the law department, they're in a different-
So what you need, that's a question for the consultants. I did not group these positions in those groupings.
Mr. Davis? I'm asking the question.
Is your microphone on?
It's on. Yes.
Do they know what we're looking at? I mean, do they have this ordinance in front of them? Does it really know their recommendation?
I, I, I don't, I'm, you know, I guess what I'm hearing is it's based on the number of employees that you have in your department.
No, no, no. Your question was why is there an N scale? Why is there an E scale? I'm trying to explain the transition from what we had to what we have now.
But, I'm sorry, I'm not called on.
Yeah, let's, Altoni, let's keep it under control a little bit. Here we are over 5 o'clock. How many more pages in the presentation, please? And, and of course, this is new information, so there's a lot for everyone to absorb here. I don't think we're going to solve it on the spot here. But this is the recommendations from the consultant. And we all know what the elephant in the room is, is executive salaries and we need to get a, a handle on that. And like the city manager said, it becomes the red herring. And I'm sure as we go through the process here, we're going to get some, some clarifications.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we, I don't think Mr. Davis has finished his presentation to us and we apologize because we haven't gotten there. But we need an additional meeting-
Absolutely.
-to have some understanding. And if there is a key to give us so we understand who all these people are, I mean, we're hearing it verbally, but it would be very helpful to have something in writing to say what A is and what N is and, and the like, so.
And I think, Mr. Davis said there was going to be some follow-up report here, he said. So how many more pages, Mr. Davis? And I'm not trying to cut this off. I'm just trying to get a sense of how much more there is in the presentation.
Well, the, the, the rest of the presentation is really at a, a high level. So Sherim, how many more pages do we have?
There are six more content slides.
And most of those focus on classification, if I'm not mistaken. But the discussion is really around the N scale and the existing scale, I think.
So Altoni.
Just really quickly, I, I understand what Director Dickinson was explaining, but there are some inconsistencies on here that almost make us think that there was, we need the consultant to come back and walk us through these titles. I don't see any other way and I don't know if that's a closed session or not because I'm trying to follow Director Dickinson's logic. But then I go, and it, you know, it's in front of me, so I can say it. There's Chief of Staff was, is, is A16 and that now is an E1. So where, we need the consultant to tell us the logic behind that. And then also, when you look at an A20, when the consultants look at an A20, an existing A20, what is their logic then into saying, well, I think this one's going to be an E1 and this one's going to be an E2 and this one's going to be E3? We don't have that data and you're asking, and, and, and we're, we're challenged to vote on this. And, and it would be reckless of us as, as a council to do that. It is not fair to our taxpayers. We need to know how you came up with these and what the numbers are. Am I correct? Do you agree?
Yeah, absolutely.
I see, look on, I see.
We all, we all agree. We all agree on that. Yeah. I think Mr. Davis, next, next slide, I think.
Sherim, next slide, please. And I think this adds to the discussion we were just having about the pay scale that we presented, the market data we presented to the Office of Human Resources reflects this. We looked at the A scale, the F scale and the P scale, and we did a comparison of the midpoints. And this, these were our recommendations. If you look at the Assistant City Manager, for example, as of the market, it's 68%. It's clearly significantly below where it should be. The others, as Peter mentioned, are within the range, but that one just jumps out at you immediately from our data. That is from all of the market surveys, the interviews and all of that. The others really are competitive, but that one sticks out at you, for example. And again, this goes into what we recommended around the salary scales. And as you can see, we laid it out according to the minimum, progressive rate, midpoint, advance and the maximum wage. So this is the data that we presented, particularly around the executives. And I hear your concerns about how that data translated into the new N scale. But all of our data has been tested and this is what's going on in the market. And we'd be happy to come back after further discussions to drill down even further. Move ahead.
So we're just going to go back to that last slide because I think that slide is the one that is, the one that is troubling people. And, and, and I'm seeing this slide for the first time too, so please.
Right, no, we all are. And I think we're trying to understand, but I'm also trying to understand, when I say 18,000, are we comparing to other municipalities like our size? Are we comparing to Howard County and, and, and big county level things? And it may be that you're telling us we should be paying the same thing at the municipal level as at the county where you're talking about many orders of magnitude, more employees and residents. and residents. You know, we, we don't have comparators. We, we cannot boil this down to what we're facing in the budget to pass within a month. And that's where the frustration is coming in.
And I would say, Mr. Davis, you said what the comparators were. You said Alexandria, you said Howard County, you said the places that you've drawn your information from. Am I right?
That is correct. There were seven comparators.
Alexandria, which is another municipality, is three times as large as Annapolis. Now, I don't know whether these things are scalable or not. Maybe the level of work in a city that's a third of the size of another city should be compensated the same. But that would be an important piece of analytic information to have in this presentation as well. Things might not be scalable.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next slide, please.
Next slide, Sherim. Again, just some recommendations that we saw. Again, put less emphasis on longevity, we talked about that. Pay-setting rules, we think there's some things that can be done there, such as getting hiring managers more involved in the pay setting. Additional resources in human resources. Again, it's the small staff. That was one of the things that we saw. And again, reduce the number of job titles. I shared a slide with you that showed the total number of, of titles for a city of size is, is, is just a little bit out of the line. So, those were just some of the early recommendations that we had. Sherim? We wanted to just leave you with some of the best practices going on in the marketplace. And again, as we talked about, you have to have the market research and the data. The data is what the data is. We went out to the comparators, compared it to the marketplace, and this is the results that we came in. Other things, having the staff trained on how to use salary surveys for pay setting is an idea. We talked a little bit about, early on, about none of us knows what this AI is going to have on classification. We just don't know, but it's going to have some impact. And then finally, one of the things that the Office of Human Resources asked us about was to make a recommendation on a job evaluation model. So, on the next slide, oh, I'm sorry. I hate the technology, I always feel like I'm talking over people.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis, thank you.
Okay. Sherim, next slide for me. Here, we looked at several different job evaluation methodologies and just tried to provide you with pros and cons in each. And most of the jurisdictions that we spoke with are using the point factor system for several reasons. It's easy, you can measure the job worth, which is why, again, I think the question came up to Graythorne about what are the similarities and differences in the federal marketplace than the city? But again, it gives you some method of measuring the job. So, this would be a recommendation for us around which model to go with. Questions?
Alderman Onad.
Thank you. So, you've mentioned the point factor system, and you're mentioning other systems here, but we don't know what those are. Are we going to get information on what these different evaluation systems are?
Absolutely. Again, this was just a briefing. Obviously, in the full report, you will have all of that information. But we were asked to do a briefing, and we wanted to show you where the study is, what we're seeing, what we heard at this point.
Thank you.
I, I do feel I need to apologize, Gavin. Can I just say, I, I really.
Alderman Tyrney, sorry.
I feel like I need to apologize to you. I think we're putting you in unfair position today, and, and, you know, we're frustrated because of what's before us, that you, you didn't write. So, I apologize if we're, seem to be attacking you or whatever, so. It's not fair to you that you don't have this information in front of you to discuss it more clearly with us, so.
Mr. City Manager?
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. It is his company's recommendations that we're using. It isn't ours.
Right, but he's not able to answer the specific questions on why, you know, an E, an A20, you know, this, this, this '07, specific to '09-24, on how those decisions were made, because they're, they're inconsistent, that's all. They're inconsistent with the.
Within their, their organization, because again, I'm going to say it, we didn't move these people around.
No.
That wasn't done by the HR director.
Let me just say it a different way. He's not, he's not prepared to answer a very specific question such as, how did the Chief of Staff translate from an A16 to an E1? He's not able to answer that today, and I think that's the kind of question, I'm not meaning, I don't mean to pick on this title, it's just, you know, another one would be, how come three different A20s are different executive ranges? So, there's a lot of data that went into this.
So, that knowledge is within Greg's firm. The person who did those is not available to do the presentation.
So, then we should just conclude this meeting.
If that's your only question, sure. I mean, but they are the ones who told us these positions, based on their duties and skills and the complexity of their jobs, belong in these, these groupings.
And we will, we will be having a follow-up meeting of this, clearly, we need one. This is kind of an overview, so I know it's a lot of information, and there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered, but the early information has been effective for us to use to go through the negotiations we had a standard to operate through, and it's been successful to get us to where we are now. Maybe this isn't ready for primetime in terms of, you know, the, the 30 days or so that we have in terms of voting on that. Maybe there has to be some deferment here, but that'll be up to us. We need another meeting on this, so we'll try to wrap this up now with a few more slides, and then any follow-up questions. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay, and then Sherim, just the last, I think there's probably two slides left. These kind of the next steps. Obviously, a report from our work. We're going to finalize, transfer all of the job descriptions, be available for any kind of implementation support. And these are other things that we've at least discussed that may be needed as we go forward. So, that concludes what we had for the briefing. And let me, let me just say, I don't feel like we've been attacked. It's your role as leaders to ask the tough questions. We, we really do stand by our methodology. As I said, we, we applied the gold standard. If there's information that you need for decision-making, we stand ready to get that information to you. Peter Kennedy jumped in at the last minute for me, and my compensation analyst, we've had a very successful study with Baltimore County, same kind of issues, and we were able to resolve those. So, with that, I will turn it back to the council and say, again, thank you for having us, and we stand ready for the follow-up meeting.
And we thank you, Mr. Davis. No good deed goes unpunished, so thank you so much. We are definitely looking up for the follow-up here, and we truly respect the information that you have all got for us. We have a lot to consider here. Are there any follow-up questions from any of the council for now?
Well, is there, in, in the data, in the, in the resolution, it does say that it shall take effect on July 1st, 2024. Is that cast in stone? I mean, do these, we, we, that's a concern of ours, too, is these would take a.
Mr. City Manager?
Michael Malinoff, City Manager, you control that.
Okay. Okay.
Well, thank you all. Thank you very much. All right. Now, we are going to move on to anything else for good order at 5:20. Alderman Onad?
Yes, thank you. So, this was a nice presentation about what they've been doing. We didn't get into the substance underpinning it. When will we get the substance so that we can make budget decisions?
I will ask.
Yeah, but when?
Director Dickinson or Mr. City Manager, what your thoughts are there, or Trish, sorry?
So, again, the market data is done. What we are doing, what the consultants are doing right now is working with the individual departments to make sure they complete their job description review, which is necessary for them to make their final determinations in terms of if there are any grade assignments that are different from, from what they are currently. And then we are working on the pay rules, which, as you mentioned earlier, is intended to address some of those areas that we just simply don't have language that we need to have in order to address a number of concerns about in-grade changes, to deal with recognition of pay equity concerns, and also recommendations they may have with regard to promotional pay rates and so on. So, that, those are the parts that are left to do, to wrap this up. I understand we're about 95% done, is it, on the job description review? Is that accurate to say, Greg?
That is correct.
Okay. So, we're, again, the expectation is that departments finish their, their piece of this, so they can wrap that part up.
So, there's an underlying question for me on the market data, because there's a real scale issue here. None of the people we're comparing to are less than three times as large as us. Anarundel County is 14 times larger than us, Howard County even larger. And it seems to be there's an assumption that it's the same scale, that there should be comparable pay. I'd like to see the justification for that assumption. I don't, I don't think that it's obvious or evident that that's a given.
Mr. Davis, maybe you can speak to that in the next, in the next meeting. Now, of course, these jurisdictions are much bigger than ours, but they have departments under their directors as well. So, you know, our directors were, I'm not standing up for the pay scale, but our directors wear a lot of hats, right? And, and so, a lot of your people do, maybe potentially do a lot of that, yeah. Mr. City Manager?
Michael Malinoff, City Manager. I get the feeling it's not going to matter, but I'm going to say, I've worked for the state government, I've worked for a county government, and I've worked for two city governments at the same general level. And the harder ones are the smaller. Now, they're fun, because you get to interact with people, you don't have layers between you, and, and, and I get what you're saying, but, you know, Gaithersburg is one of our peers, and they were.
But so much bigger than us.
Not, not really.
Not really. And it's, and the thing you got to look at, if you look at Gaithersburg or any of the Washington areas, and W, and I think Alexandria is part of this, the Maryland side, they have the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission and WSSC. We handle that, except the sewer component of it. Maybe we should handle the sewer now because of the smell, but we don't. They, they, they have other people and other organizations doing it. Alexandria is part of WSSC, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission. So, there are different scalings all around. And, and again, I've been a member of ICMA for 35 years. I see all the job bulletins. I see what people are making to give you an example. And the mayor knows this, the city of Newport just hired a new city manager and an assistant, and they're creating an assistant city manager that they didn't have before. And the city manager starting is 225,000. The city population is 25,000. And the deputy is going to be at or around 200,000, or the assistant. So, it, the compatibility around in the data you need, I think they can provide, but I just wanted to put a little bit of perspective that it, it isn't just the size, it's the complexity of your community, where you're, where you're located, the cost of living. We're, we were talking about this earlier, because it is something I've seen over the years, and I think you all appreciate, is we were sort of, at the beginning of my career, a little bit of a, you know, certainly wealthy, but not where we are now, certainly part of DC and Baltimore metropolitan area, but more Eastern Shore. But now, we're part of this massive metropolitan area, and that's the type of, of data they have to collect, because that's the workforce we're trying to attract and retain. And it's the same with police, fire, and everyone else. So, I'm, could go on forever, because it's what I've done.
But you, you, in effect, are answering my question, because you're saying it's not scalable, that being the head of public works as an engineer in Annapolis is every, has the same level of KSA requirements as being the head of public works in the county. And that's a perfectly acceptable answer, and it'd be good, good to get that documented from the contractor, but that's an important piece of information.
It's a quick one.
And I accept your experience.
But it also is where we, and you're right, comparing Anarundel to Annapolis, but we're in the same geographic area, too. It used to be, and, and the first study we had here, I forget, it wasn't Hendrix, it was something else, I think we were comparing to Easton and, and Eastern Shore, and it, and those are expensive places now, too, but the job market is such, and the cost of living is such here. And that was the thing that was driving it in Newport, because they can't bring someone in there to work for what they were paying before. Great quality of life, very expensive.
Alderman Pendell-Chavez has hardly asked any questions. Alderman Pendell-Chavez.
Thank you. I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'll start with that. But you indicated that oftentimes the smaller jurisdictions are more complex, and I think we can make that same argument when we talk about the sizes of our own departments. We should not be so caught up on the size of the department, it's the complexity, as you just indicated. And I think we all know what we're talking about here. So, OEM versus public works. We keep getting hung up on the numbers of people in the different departments, but sometimes the smaller departments have the most weight, and, and.
I have no, but I want to reiterate to you, we did not set the grades, those were what we were given. And so, that's a discussion I would certainly encourage you to have with the consultants and why. But it's not a bad analogy you're giving.
And I would say, if you could put down some of your questions and give them to Trish to give to the consultants, so at least we can get ahead of some of that. Would that be okay?
Can we get the slides?
Yeah.
Or we can memorize some of these presentations?
Could I get a head start on just one?
Sure. Alderman Tyrney?
Thank you.
Oh, I'll be really quick.
No, no, she's been jumping out at me, I can't.
I know. I'm sorry, I'm just a numbers person, and, and in my experience, there'd be, in, you know, construction estimating, they're sort of like firewalls, and when we know, oh, staff is over 8%, ding, 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 ding. You know, it just seems like we're, we're increasing these salaries without any idea of what is it doing to our total budget? How is that percentage compared to other jurisdictions? So, that comes to a question, do you have data of what, of these other jurisdictions? What percent of their budget is staff? And then also, how many bodies do they have? You said earlier that we have a lot of different titles. Is that a factor? I mean, these are the things we need to see, otherwise, we're just looking at this in, in a vacuum, you know? So, if you could provide something like that, it would be helpful.
Good question to put down for Trish, to put onto the consultant.
My question?
Alderman O'Neil?
She's been everything tonight, today.
I'll be over there next, I'll be Alderman Gay. That's who I'm going to be next, Alderman Gay, Ward 6. If we do not get to a point where we are accepting or understanding of what's been presented, what's the recourse? How much of bargaining has been, well, we know how much has been completed, three out of four. How do we move forward, is my question? And you don't have to answer it now, because I'm sure it should take some thinking.
Well, I'd like to, I think with the bargaining, we will certainly brief you, there's ordinances associated with it, but we've had collective bargaining, and they, they're. associated with it, but we've had collective bargaining, and they, their members have adopted it, what was offered, and it's scalable to, and budgeted to where we've been traditionally. And you know that we haven't raised taxes either. So I would be pretty confident, if I were you, that your team did a good job on that. As far as the rest of it, the Director Dickinson has budgeted enough reserve to pay for any impacts, and if you need more time, take it. But I wouldn't advise that on the negotiation, because as you know.
Right, and I wouldn't want to disrupt that at all. But it would also give us an opportunity to completely analyze and understand the report coming from PMR, which is what this is all about.
And as the city manager said, the ordinance is in our hands, it's in the council's hands. The budget has to be met at a certain time, but clearly there's a lot.
They're not meeting their deadlines, why should we meet ours?
It's close. Any other questions?
I wanted to make a comment about, I'm not sure where the questions reside, if, right now, we're working with the unions on the scales. It's sort of equivalent to what you see with that N scale table. If your issues are mainly with the executive pay grades and how those, if those are where the concerns are, then we should find a way to, if that's where you want to take the time and study more, separate that out, because we've already gone through the negotiation process, and I wouldn't want to delay non-rep stuff as well as the executive. So if we need to focus on that, I can walk you through later, how to, how we update what we have, and then how we might address more time on the executive pay bands. So we have to talk about it in conjunction with the particular legislation that you have before you, and what happens if there's no action taken on that, and depending on what, and depending on what groups you want to have more questions on, have more time on.
Again, it's in the council's hands, you can pull Section 8 out, EE out, sorry, if that needed to be done, or something like that, right? So we control that, right? But of course, we need to move forward on the negotiations and get that.
Yeah, and if you can funnel your questions as soon as possible, the sooner we can get that kind of information through the consultants.
Great.
Excuse me, and I did provide each of you a copy of the slide deck that was provided to me, so you should have that now.
If I could.
And please provide, if you can, just to make sure that your questions go to Director Dickinson, and please copy me.
Dickinson?
Tricia, excuse me, we got to change that, you know?
Need a total group.
And then you also copy Director Dickinson and myself, because they have financial and overall implications.
But could I request, as a courtesy to us, that we get these presentations in advance? We could have been prepared, and we could have had some of our questions answered, but it is so tough to not know what we're going to see and be able to evaluate it. It's just not fair to us. So, you know, I'd really like to not do that in the future.
All right, well, again, thank you, everybody. Is there anything else for good order? Okay, meeting adjourned.